All right. Welcome to the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Let's start by, uh, calling attendance and introducing ourselves, starting with Commissioner Casino.
Uh, my name is Eric Casino. I, uh, live in the Lacey UGA and I serve the commission in at-large capacity.
Uh, Barry Halverson, Yelm District.
Kevin.
I'm Pessinger, District Five.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
And then our commissioners online.
Uh, Colin Bartlett, District, uh, Five. I live in Tumwater.
And I am Vice Chair, Acting Chair for the Day, Commissioner Bumberger, um, District One, and I live and serve in Olympia. Um, that gets us to three, four, five, six. So we have quorum, so we may proceed. Um, let us start with, oh, see, I don't have a copy of the agenda. I just have a copy of the meeting minutes.
Uh, if there's supposed to be a visual recording, I'm not seeing it, by the way.
Oh, is boardroom video turned off?
No. Oh, yeah.
To those of you joining us online, hopefully now you can see our somewhat smiling faces.
I see ya.
All right, sweet.
Okay, a motion to approve the agenda for November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All right, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Motion passes unanimously. All right.
Motion to approve of the, uh, meeting minutes from October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and use the video and audio recording as the...
Official record?
Official record.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What?
Mr. Pessinger?
On page three or four, nine, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and this is, I'll take Commissioner Nelson because I think this was the issue he raised, but I think it says agreement was indicated by thumbs up from the commissioners. I would recommend to say that agreement was indicated by unanimous thumbs up from the commissioner.
I'm amenable to that. Are you amenable to that, Mr. Nelson? Objections to that modification? I don't know. I think that is a friendly amendment. Pass amended. Uh, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Motion passes. All right, well, it is that time, folks, for public comment. I have a fun little script to read for all y'all. Um, the Thurston County Planning Commission welcomes comments from the public at all meetings. We have some general speaking guidelines. Please introduce yourself, including the address that you reside in the county. Please address the Planning Commission, not the audience or the staff. The Planning Commission may not respond to public comments. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes. The timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. Meeting attendees cannot donate their speaking time to another person. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. No comments that are commercial in nature. All materials provided to the county may be subject to release pursuant to the Public Records Act. Remarks on projects that have already had a Planning Commission public hearing will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. Thank you for your cooperation. We'll start here in the boardroom with...
Our point of info?
Yes.
Uh, just got a note from Commissioner Fishburne. He's trying to sign into Zoom and struggling with it. He hopes to be here shortly.
Commissioner Miller is also, uh, flying and trying to get on there.
On, on airplane Wi-Fi, which is a bit spotty. Um, let us start with Christie White. Steve, go ahead and walk up to the podium, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, my comments today are relative to the memo presented to you from the planning staff relative to the best available science regarding critical access air ordinance. I'd like to encourage the Planning Commission through this process to engage in, to the fullest extent, non-scientific information in its critical areas ordinance updates along with best available science. Community experience and observation, in my mind, should be utilized to measure the validity of best available science. All respect to fish and wildlife, I know there are a lot here, i.e. given the example about bears. The best available science perhaps from fish and wildlife may show that there's no bears in the area, but they can't be all places at all times. And I can perhaps, as a, as a citizen, show you fifteen different videos of bears in the immediate area in the last few months. So my ask would be that as you go through this process, that perhaps there's some additional challenge to the best available science. Is it the most current? Do we need to do a little bit more drilling down to see what else might be happening, happening quite currently? Um, in addition to best available science, that says there's a fifty-fifty chance of a landslide based on, um, what that science currently shows. But you've got a public outcry from citizens saying that it's possible, it's reasonable. You know, going, going back to some of the recent landslides we've had in our, in our area. I would ask the Planning Commission to kind of lean in to what the public might be saying when it's sort of borderline, to at least give that some additional lift. When we go down to that, um, there is, it doesn't say that you can't use non-scientific information. So I think there's some leeway there. Um, if there are issues that the public brings forth, or that are not on the list right now of best available science, i.e. climate potentials, I would ask that you also take some additional drill-down look for things that might come up through the process. It's a great deal of work that the staff has to do, and I don't take that for granted. So I hope that you, you really look hard at critical areas. Um, it really, this policy is the foundation, in my mind, for what makes Thurston County so pristine and beautiful. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And one additional thing, Christie, I, I don't believe, did you identify where in the county?
I'm sorry?
Just for the record.
Yeah, I'm Adelphi. I live in the Adelphi Valley of Thurston County.
We know that, but I just want to make sure it's in the record. No, no worries.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Hi, guys.
Hey.
Oh, my name's Betsy Norton. I live in Olympia. Um, I didn't have time to prepare something formal, so this is kind of, sorry about that. Um, in terms of best available science, I did take a quick look at the staff report, and I would like to make sure that you guys are clear on the difference between best management practices and best available science. Agencies, uh, state agencies that do regulation typically are doing this management practice, which lag best available science by sometimes, oh, many years. And a lot of times are limited by what they see at the time as feasible economic, um, ability by the industry. And so they're not going to give you, you know, for instance, for six PPDQ, they could tell you the best available science is, it's really bad for Coho, and that we should, you know, prevent it from falling in any streams. The best management practices at the moment, I'm sure, is far behind that, and you know, it's just not feasible to do that with every berm, um, every road. So that's just an example. The second thing is, I didn't see anything on there for climate change, which was a little astounding. Um, I would, uh, encourage you to hit up UDEP's, maybe I just missed it, I don't know, but I would encourage you to look at UDEP SIG. Use them for your climate change information. They do both localizations and they keep up with the latest, uh, climate models. Um, and that's going to be really important as you perceive, particularly with sea level rise and shoreline's, um, expectations for weather. And I guess I would agree to some degree with, with, um, with Christie about the localization. I think on the ground, ground truthing is important every once in a while, or certainly to verify things when it seems like they may not be exactly right, or they may not fit the models. Um, I would pay attention to that. For instance, when you have everybody telling you that the FEMA flood zones are in it, are inaccurate, they probably are. And actually, it's sort of agreed that they are, and they're really out of date. But I asked ecology explicitly about whether you could apply the NOAA flood maps, and they said, oh, there are all these political and economic problems with doing that. So I don't know how you want to deal with that, but it's a, it's something that does need to be dealt with if we know that the actual situation is radically different than the basic data that you're using to make decisions. So I have a few links for you. Um, I would also encourage you to, um, keep up with the International Panel on Climate Change Updates. They have a lot of very good information, sort of gives you an idea of what the rest of the world is doing and the rest of the world is seeing in terms of trends and expectations, and I think that's going to be important. Um, I'd also suggest you use Google Earth. They have this cool timeline thing you can use when you want to see if, if streams have moved around and stuff like that. Sometimes you can see that on there. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sure. Um, I've, I've had both Commissioner Fishburne and Commissioner Miller say that the link that they have for the Zoom link isn't working. Um, so I don't know if it's possible to resend the link to them or double-check, but...
I can send them the public. Phone number, that's locked in.
That may be Commissioner Fishburne?
Okay.
Gotcha. So just for the record, Commissioner Fishburne has joined us via phone. All right?
And, uh, as far as Commissioner Miller is concerned, in my experience, uh, airlines choke out your ability to do video conferencing pretty often. Um, so that might actually be on that side of it.
Understood. Okay, um, we will move on to folks who are on Zoom. If you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand to show that you are interested in providing comment, and we will call on you on, in order. Um, I see Loretta Seppenin has her hand up, so we're going to promote you to a panelist. And once you are, you can unmute, and we will start your timer, your comments.
Uh, good evening, uh, Loretta Seppenin. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm, I live in Olympia, Washington, and I am speaking on the critical area ordinance idea. I want to ask you to ask staff to alter your work plan just a little bit. Uh, this is to build in some time now in the beginning of this process to talk, to discuss ordinance statements that are going to apply generically to all, all across the types of critical areas. So they're not going to be specific to the topics, and what you've got now is an agenda that's just specific by topic. So these are going to apply generically. I, I made this request, um, in, at your October meeting, so I'm repeating it, and at that time I mentioned, um, Snohomish County had a nice set of, 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 um, process comments that they included, and so I want to reiterate that that's a good idea, and I'd like you to do that. Um, particularly the avoid, minimize, and if you need to compensate concept, that whole, uh, requirement of the CIPA requirement that has to apply to everything that we do in critical area ordinances. And, uh, to do that over the lifetime of the development, and, and to figure out how to do it in a way that can be monitored. And then I, and I put this in an email to you, so hopefully you receive that. Uh, and, uh, another area I saw from Pierce County is that they worked, but clearly the Planning Commission had worked together to write a statement about why we are doing these ordinances. And, um, and so, so far, as your staff has presented the why as the fact that they're out of date and that they're required by law to be periodically updated and to keep your, um, um, best available science up to date. I think we can do better than that, and the Pierce County model, I think, gives us some ideas. Uh, we don't want our development to, uh, choices to get in the way of our goal for the life of wildlife or good water quality. And I think we can make some statements about that. What I'd suggest is that you have some time as a planning commission to talk together about the why statements that you want. Obviously, it's going to include that you got to keep them up to date and, and that this is required by state law. But, uh, let's have some whys that relate to the values that we have as a community in protecting our environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There any other comments that folks would like to give online? If so, please raise your hand, and we will promote you to speaker. Panelist, I should say. Going once. Going twice. Okay. That brings public comment to an end. We will move on with our agenda. Uh, up next, we have no new business. Uh, we are moving to work session four, sorry, work session five, agenda item four, the critical areas ordinance update with Claire.
Start with a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Pessinger.
Uh, so I appreciated the comment, uh, Loretta Seppenin, and wonder about those three questions that she asked. Um, do you feel like we could have a general provision section to our agenda, and would that be valuable for our December third meeting? Do you feel like it makes sense to have similar mitigating sequencing language with Pierce County? And do you feel like the list of whys that Renton has published is useful? I think that one is especially a good thing. I know when we write documents of my work, it makes a big difference to kind of state the purpose and the reason why we're doing things, and then, you know, the underlying what we're trying to accomplish, and then say some specific details. That way, if there's any confusion about the details, it can go back to the core, what you're trying to accomplish. Um, do you think that's something we could try?
Yeah, I know. Um, as far as the issue of talking about the whys, I think as staff internally, we have had, we've talked about that and have come up with some points. I just, like, I, I appreciate the public comment because I realized that I double, double-checked the website, and they're not on there. Um, that's something we can add really easily, and that also we can run by if there are any other, like, big whys or important, like, driving ideas that you guys have, we can incorporate that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, I think to the, the broader question of kind of working in some more time to discuss it, I feel like we could probably fit that in with some of the, some of the ongoing work.
Yeah, that and, um,
I don't think it's going to...
Some of the, like, general, like, all-purpose things that apply to every critical area are mostly going to fall under some of the process discussions that'll come at the end, but also, um, on the advice from some of our implementing staff, our current planners, we will be talking a little bit about permitting and process and that kind of general stuff at each meeting, so that it'll be the conversations about the pieces of process that are specific to each critical area, and that will build up towards the end of the schedule to a broader, uh, discussion about the process and general requirements. So that is in there. Um, and hopefully will be supported by the fact that we all get a strong understanding of each critical area and then are able to make sure that the general process pieces line up with all of that information that we'll be getting in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
All right, you're good to start your presentation. And, uh, oh, participants? Oh, Colin, go ahead, Commissioner Bartlett.
Sorry, uh, I was, I had been, uh, intending to motion to have that, that, uh, that, uh, general session, but it sounds like that's already taken care of, so I don't need to do that. So I just didn't lower my hand, sorry.
Okay.
So. Today, uh, we're going to be doing a very high-level, broad overview of what some of the, uh, best available science looks like. We're going to be focusing in this presentation a lot on what kind of, what the structure and the sources that we use, what kinds of things best available science tends to refer to for each critical area, just to help build a framework. So when we, uh, bring resources up in more specifics later on, um, we kind of have some groundwork as far as what best available science is. Another, um, important part of this discussion is because we are open to folks submitting, um, science that they see as relevant and important to us as part of the public engagement for the process. We want to set expectations for, according to the WAC, the Washington Administrative Code, uh, what counts as best available science and what types of, um, characteristics of scientific rigor we have to consider if we're going to be basing a policy decision on a piece of science. So best available science is defined in the WAC. The citation's on screen for those curious. Um, the factors that are listed there that have to be considered are peer review, which means that, uh, the information has been critically reviewed by people who are qualified to do so in that field. This is true for most. Oh, yeah, I don't know what my screenshot's sharing. It says it is. Oh, there we go.
He's still sharing. It just wasn't on the screen.
Yes. It's the one, if you guys didn't see this, but this is just the outline of the presentation. Um, and now we're on to this. Um, so peer review, this is what, um, most scientific journal publications are peer reviewed. That's probably where you've heard the phrase before, if you're familiar with it. Um, methods, uh, when research has been performed, we should be able to see those methods clearly explained. They should be replicable and relevant. Um, any piece of science should make logical conclusions and reasonable inferences, so there's no big gaps in information or big jumps in assumption. Uh, assumptions are made, they're explained and backed up by outside sources. Quantitative analysis, not every piece of best available science has this, but when we're looking at research, we do want to see things like numbers and statistics, and that the, when that is happening, the methods used for analy, analyzing those numbers and statistics are, are relevant and appropriate. Uh, the information should be placed in the proper context. The assumption should be appropriately framed framed in the field of study, so it's, it's set against a backdrop of other related information in science. Uh, and it uses references. The assumptions, techniques, and conclusions are referenced with citations to relevant incredible literature. Not every piece of work that is considered best available science checks all of these boxes, but they should include the maximum amount of these features that are reasonable for the type of publication that it is. So a research paper will probably have most of these if it's in a peer-reviewed journal, but something like an expert opinion might have fewer of these, um, and that's appropriate to the type of publication.
So I read in a comic book that a meteor's going to hit the Earth, doesn't qualify.
And that's pretty much what this slide says. Um, things that cannot be a basis for policy decisions alone, um, include anecdotal information, which is just observations that aren't part of a kind of scientific organized effort. Um, non-expert opinions, personal opinions by people who aren't qualified scientific experts, uh, in a pertinent scientific discipline, and hearsay, which is information that's being repeated without proper citation. Um, this doesn't mean that we can't engage with the public or listen to what people have to say or, um, take guidance from our community. It just means that when we are building policy, we need to make sure that it is backed by best available science, even if the process to coming to that conclusion is also informed by public engagement. So the RCW requires that we use best available science. Um, so that's part of why we're having this whole discussion, is it is required as part of the process for updating, um, critical areas ordinance. What we do is review the literature that we collect. We will then, um, present it back in presentations like this and more detailed ones for each critical area. Um, sometimes there will be major decision points or questions that come out of it. Uh, and that's a lot of what we'll be bringing to Planning Commission and looking for feedback on. Um, sometimes even within the body of science, there are still decisions to be made about what implementing that science looks like, and that's where the feedback can be very effective. Um, and we are still open to submissions from the public, uh, for relevant best available science for us to consider. If folks come across something interesting or exciting, they're welcome to send it to us to consider. Yeah.
Uh, there was a comment about best management practice often being used in lieu of or behind schedule of best available science, and this is saying counties and cities must use it per RCW. Did that have a deadline, a time at which that had to be implemented? And are we still using best management practice in any areas? Are we, are we fully up to date?
So, uh, specifically, the science usually leads the best management practice. So, you know, the science will tell you something, and then agencies will develop guidance around something. Sometimes those lines get really blurry, really blurry, um, maybe even appropriately blurry. Um, but the, the management practice usually takes a while longer to catch up. So I think the, the six PPD is a pretty perfect example of that, where we know that it affects Coho, we know it comes from stormwater. Um, it took probably, this was actually very fast, but it took the Department of Ecology, uh, you know, close to two years to come up with guidance on the likely, uh, types of best management practices that could address it. We knew a couple, um, going into it, but it took a while to actually translate that into what you do on the ground. So the way it might work in a situation like this is you might have best available science on the impacts of, like, wetland disturbance on, uh, let's use Coho salmon again as an example, and it might take a while to figure out what you do about that, and that's where the best manager practice comes in. I guess one of my concerns, which we also heard from some of our public comment today, is that my impression is that best available science is supposed to be the starting point of this, not the ending point. And, um, if there is a disparity between best available science and then our ground truthing, I don't want to throw away our ground truthing. It's tricky, um, because that, that line really, it cuts both ways. And that's why the state is pretty clear about what is and isn't best available science. So it, it could cut in that, uh, you know, we know we've got reports, like citizen reports of bears on a property, for example. And it could also cut that a local government could decide, we have reports that I've got no gophers on my property. Um, so it is pretty prescriptive about the types of things, and there's a whole range. I'm looking at the, the table that they've got. Um, we, we could defer to expert opinion, that we could, like, use that kind of, like, scientific best professional judgment to verify some of the anecdotal, or dig deeper and find other reports that would corroborate.
Is best professional judgment now another acronym that we need to add in here?
So they, in the WAC, they call it expert opinion.
Okay.
Um, so...
So expert opinion, though, would be a best available science. What happens then when we have two best available sciences that have a disparity?
They have to rock, paper, scissors to decide which one's correct.
So the, the nature of best is you picking one is better than the other. I do, I appreciate where the conversation is going, but, um, I do want to note that Commissioner Bartlett has had his hand up for a bit now. Now, um, let him speak.
Thank you. Uh, you guys are getting at a lot of what I was concerned about. Specifically, though, in my context, uh, I'm thinking about the, like, you know, tens of thousands of years of indigenous science that are not, that would not give someone the credentials to be considered a scientist or in a, like, registered expert of any sort. That would still be incredibly relevant to these decisions, like, how do we, how do we manage experts who are experts in ways that don't provide that kind of credential? I mean, especially when we're talking about, uh, like indigenous knowledge, which is often de-scientized.
I'm not sure that the WAC accounts for that problem, Commissioner Bartlett.
I think there is still room for us to note and pay attention to that, and there is scholarship on the validity and, and use of indigenous knowledge, and I've, I've got a couple papers stat... And I've, I've got a couple of papers stacked in my big pile of science that I'm building on my computer that reference that. It is something that I've already thought about and that I think there's, there's room for if we find the right resources, keeping in mind that we have to comply with the WAC.
All right. I think you're good to continue with your presentation, Claire.
Something else I wanted to clarify really quickly about this presentation, because we were having that conversation about the guidance, the BMPs and the science. This presentation is kind of a jumping off point and high level. And it focuses mostly on agency guidance, which tends to be a compilation of best available science. It is far from being the only thing we will consider. And other sources will come up in detail when we discuss each critical area as it's laid out in our schedule and we have those focused times to discuss. So I know that folks are concerned about expand, keeping up with the latest things that are coming out and expanding the base of knowledge that we're using. We're absolutely going to do that. This is a starting point to see what some of the, the core pieces of guidance and information in science that are coming out of state and federal agencies are as kind of a baseline of information for each of these critical areas. So just want to make that clear. So for geologically hazardous areas, the primary agency responsible for providing guidance is the Washington Department of Natural Resources. We also see important guidance from the US Geological Survey and Thurston Regional Planning Council, and that is specifically as it relates to hazards planning. Geologically hazard areas are one of those critical areas that also overlaps heavily with natural hazards planning and mitigation. So that's something else that we consider as part of the critical areas regulations for this type of critical area. One of the biggest things to come out for this one is newly published mapping resources from DNR that include LiDAR-based landslide maps that display areas that have been previously affected by landslide or have a particular risk for future landslides. And these have a really high level of accuracy and precision because they're LiDAR-based. And because regulating geologically hazardous areas rely so heavily on GIS mapping, it's important that we make sure the CAO can refer to this and that we use this tool to its maximum efficacy in that CAO process. Something that was important to our permitting staff in conversations about geo-hazards, which we'll talk more a little bit about next week, was helping people get clarity and transparency about what the geological landscape of their property is and what level of investigation and their reports are needed. So does someone need to invest in a big report or do they not? This type of detailed mapping can help us with that kind of thing. Yeah.
I recall the surprise of the Oso landslide. And I don't think it was on the list of places that was likely to have a landslide and it buried an entire town.
It would have absolutely shown up on the LiDAR mapping that we have right now. Right after that slid, slid, I flew over it on Google Maps and I saw the scarp instantly. So this would have.
You saw the what?
Scarp. There was a, there was a fissure in the hillside above the landslide. It was plain as day.
I've looked at aerial photos of the area as well, and it seemed very obvious to me heavily impacted by clearcutting, which is right on the plateau above, which is never mentioned as one of the possible causes. I don't understand why. But A, is there any best available science that's been learned from that that's relevant to us in Thurston County? And B, I know we don't have a town that's about to get covered by a bluff nearby, but do we have any areas of any that level of, slightly lesser level? Not just one house in danger, but a part of a community.
Like Carolyn Beach?
What?
Like Carolyn Beach?
Maybe currently.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, I just recruited our geotechnical engineer to come when we bring DNR. So we should be able to speak to that. And that is very professional work that we should leave to professionals discussing that.
There was a briefing, it was a board briefing in the weeks after that event here in the county, because the then Board of County Commissioners was curious to know what sort of hazards were on our landscape. Because, so we could probably dig some of that up as well.
Yeah, and I know that from looking at other counties' best available science reports, those who are ahead of us in the cycle, they are looking to Snohomish County and the work that they did as lessons learned from that. And we'll be doing the same, looking at Snohomish County's code and what they changed to reflect that and any resources that they've started to use since then. Because yeah, there's definitely lessons to be learned from that one.
Before we go further, Commissioner Bartlet has his hand up again.
Nope.
Or he just hasn't lowered his hand then, nevermind.
The CAO, when it comes to hazardous areas like this, should also reflect hazard mitigation efforts. So that's Thurston Regional Planning Council has a hazard mitigation plan for the Thurston region. And that includes hazard assessments for earthquakes, landslides, and volcanic lahar events. We mostly, we spend a lot of time talking about landslides. We talk about geologically hazardous areas, but that umbrella also includes areas susceptible to seismic liquefaction and lahar hazard areas. And so there are steps that the CAO takes to align with hazard mitigation efforts for those types of areas as well.
Colly, we must be affected by that.
It's, uh, yeah, actually, I think that is where the lahar hazard area is for the most part because it comes off of the mountain. And then we'll also be reflecting Washington DNR's plan for climate resilience, in part by using their updated mapping, which is created, you know, under that plan for climate resilience in alignment and other resources that refer to climate resiliency as far as landslide hazards. You know, things like increased heavy rainfall events and channel migration can affect landslide hazard areas. For critical aquifer recharge areas, the primary agency that publishes guidance is the Department of Ecology. The EPA also sometimes provides guidance for these areas because they relate to water quality. A lot of the agency guidance comes in the forms of stormwater management pollutant, pollution avoidance steps, and this is an area where there are BMPs, but we can also look to other forms of best available science. CARA regulations protect groundwater, which is our primary drinking source for Thurston County. And we'll accomplish protection for that drinking water by aligning with guidance from Ecology and the EPA, including mapping and designating CARAs and wellhead areas and best management practices for controlling and mitigating stormwater runoff where it's relevant to the CAO. There's other things in place that also deal with stormwater that aren't necessarily.
So is this our nexus into the drainage manual?
Yeah, so this, I mean, this would, we, well, that would apply in like kind of where you might apply the drainage manual and how you might apply it, because we do have discretion as a county. We're only required to actually apply the manual and the stormwater permit within the UGA areas. So.
In the rural areas.
We're not required to, but we do.
Is that because of the CAO or is that because?
I think it's, I'm not.
Where'd that policy originate?
I'm not sure. It could have been just a stormwater management decision. Or I'm not sure if it was CAO or stormwater management decision.
Yeah, I think that's a stormwater thing because the stormwater manual came out shortly after critical areas.
Yeah, and sometimes it's worthwhile to just apply something like that countywide to help find regulatory consistency.
If, if it's easy to, to run that to ground, find out exactly why and where that decision was made and where it's located, where that decision-making process is located, I think that would be valuable for us to know.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it lives in the drainage manual.
In the drainage manual.
Are we going to have somebody from Stormwater come in and talk to us about it?
We don't currently have plans to do so, but if that's of interest, we can.
You may want to add them to your list.
What's board sentiment on that? We posit, we like the idea of bringing someone in to speak to that?
I would love to hear somebody from Stormwater tell us what they're doing over there and how it enters. Yeah.
We have a Stormwater.
So it, it sounds like it's not just a one-person request, it's a go-do for the. I think understanding, because Stormwater is actually pretty, it's a distributed responsibility across the county. And CPED and our community planning team, we coordinate the countywide stormwater permitting program. There are parts of it that live in public works, there are parts that live in public health, parts of it that live in CPED. So depending on what type of.
I think that information would be looking for. I think that since the planning commission's nexus with Stormwater is usually with development, finding somebody over at the public work side, you know, the Tim Wilson kind of person would be more valuable to us than somebody that does permitting, Larry Schaffner type of person, to come and tell us how these stormwater policies are affecting development and where we could have input on those.
I also don't care about the permitting side, but I'd be very curious from the public health side. I want to know how much safe drinking water we have, how critical aquifer recharging affects that, and what other factors and risks do we face at loss of drinking water?
This, to me, I think the, the most valuable input, I think would probably come from Mr. Kevin Hanson at this point.
Well, if you ever say you want to bring Kevin in, I would love to hear from him. So it, it does sound like the board has given a potential work item. We don't know how feasible it is, but the commission, yeah. I'm sorry. It's been a long day. I spent the first half hour trying to get Yvonne in and it just is not working. It's the wireless internet, but yeah, that's only a to-do item for the.
And do we want to talk about it specifically in context of the critical for recharge areas?
To include that.
I was certainly to include that, yeah.
Yeah. To include, but not exclusively is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, we can, we can run it to ground. Well said.
Okay. Just, just so we're clear.
On the schedule, I can double check. Well, we'll pull up the schedule if you can.
Yeah.
I'd love to.
Thank you.
Because I love learning things from him, so. All right. Frequently flooded areas, the primary agency that provides guidance and delineation for these areas is FEMA. We also have resources from Department of Natural Resources, Ecology, and again, that Thurston Regional Planning Council Hazard Mitigation Plan. We also have our own flood hazard mitigation plan that the CAO should be in alignment with and reflect. Flood areas are primarily delineated by FEMA flood maps. We also use additional designations that aren't from FEMA, specifically high groundwater and flood of record. Yeah.
Mr. Alverson?
How much is your emergency management group involved?
They haven't been involved up to this point, but I'm sure we'll be able to have conversations with them when we get to the specifics of.
When we talk about FEMA.
Yeah.
And flood maps and stuff like that, they, they should have some expertise.
They just went through it with a new flood hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah, we'll be referencing that to make sure that the CAO aligns with what's in the flood hazard mitigation plan, but.
I don't, I don't want to dig too deep now, but one of my largest concerns over the last two years is specific to this very topic and the adoption of the FEMA maps and the amount of power that FEMA maps have. And so when we get to this point, I would really like to drill down on, on that part of best available science. Because it's really difficult to look at a FEMA map and then overlay that with a topography map and say these are the same thing.
Right?
All right. So for wetlands, the primary agency providing guidance is Ecology. When it comes to mitigation specifically, they're also guidance from the Army Corps of Engineers. Sometimes they're involved in large-scale mitigation projects. Ecology provides guidance for delineating, classifying, and regulating wetlands. They establish the functions and values that CAO protects and provide regulatory frameworks that we can use and implement. According to their science, undisturbed buffers are crucial to maintaining ecological functions of wetlands. They also provide support for wetland mitigation, and wet mitigation occurs when impacts to wetlands is unavoidable. Like, for example, in the case of an RUE sometimes.
Commissioner Passenger has a question.
All right. Army Corps of Engineers, what do they do in Thurston County? I know they're responsible for the shipping canal. What other things are they responsible for in Thurston County?
I don't know as far as like development projects that they're responsible, but in terms of wetlands, Army Corps of Engineers, and in my experience in other locations, they've provided mitigation banking for wetlands. And they, they have written and contributed to guidance on compensatory mitigation. So if a wetland is destroyed or disturbed for a project, the process of making sure that there's essentially no net loss of ecological functions from wetlands, that it's, that it's mitigated.
They play a permitting role in certain types of activities.
All hydrology projects.
Yeah, if you're touching wetland either through a programmatic permit or potentially routed for individual review, depending on what it is.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, and wetland mitigation can be either programmatic. An example of programmatic mitigation is the way we do our habitat conservation plan, where people pay a mitigation fee and then we use that to do large-scale projects. Or you can do permity responsible mitigation, which means that whoever is creating this disturbance is responsible individually for creating mitigation for that disturbance. Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas, the primary agency that gives us guidance on these is the Department of Fish and Wildlife, specifically their Priority Habitats and Species Program, lists out these species and habitats that are considered fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas and in need of protection. There's also some information from Ecology. Fish and Wildlife Habitat areas overlap with a lot of other critical areas as well. And a lot of the, to me, most exciting new agency guidance that has come out involves delineating and protecting riparian habitat areas, but they also provide guidance for aquatic and dry land habitats. These critical areas are often associated with streams, lakes, and rivers and the land near them, which is the riparian area. Riparian ecosystems are areas where the surface water and the dry land connect. Groundwater often also moves through these areas, so there's a strong interconnection between water and the land nearby. These areas contribute and exchange energy and organic matter with aquatic ecosystems and are vital to the health and morphology of water bodies. WDFW guidance encourages the use of riparian management zones as a regulatory framework rather than just buffers, which is what is commonly currently used in a lot of places, including here in our current code. This method focuses on the area and functions of the riparian ecosystem and is centered on ecosystem functions. And there's some interesting tidbits in there about channel migration as well in terms of how things are calculated and protected. Yeah.
I've been following stuff around fish passage barriers for at least 25 years here in Washington and what a big deal they are and how many there are and how extensive and how many fishery habitat areas have been affected by them. And we still, 15 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago, just now, we see story after story of we took out a fish passage barrier and oh my God, we couldn't believe how much fish all of a sudden showed up and went into all sorts of places we never expected they would have reached, including them showing up in the middle of farmers' fields, like hayfields and stuff. Fish out in the middle of a field. And at what point is that going to be best available science? That we know that when we clear some fish passage barriers, we dramatically affect the habitat availability for a lot of species. Do you know where we're at here in Thurston County in regard to that? I know that's a big area you're studying.
Yeah, so I think this is a really good example of, like, we've got things that happen in the past that are, that become these really expensive problems to dig out of. The fish passage barrier problems that we have are based on old roadway design guidance. And those.
Or dance.
That, it's honestly, a lot of it is just, you know, undersized, poorly designed culverts, road crossings, or just road crossings that weren't designed to pass fish or hydrologically undersized. The, that's an instance where the, the guidance gets updated and you still have a giant backlog. The backlog becomes this like retrofit project and those can be absurdly expensive. So they become this like.
Heavy spending on that.
Like chip away at the problem over time. One of the actually really exciting things that the county's involved in is there's a, there's multi-jurisdictional transportation. It's stormwater focused, but it does include covert assessments, retrofit prioritization project across the Puget Sound side of the county, Lacey, Olympia, Tum Water. So all the jurisdictions have come together through the TRPC to actually look at a, like, building this big retrofit prioritization project so that you can start kind of ticking your way through those in a way that actually makes the most sense for fish. Because the other example on the culverts is there are some culverts, you could pull out a covert and you could put fish, you can create ecological traps, you can put them into poisonous storm water. It's in a stormwater or a place that has no habitat, so being really clear about which ones have the highest benefit. When you're trying to dig through that retrofit backlog is super important.
Yeah, and I think just as a broader point uh for thinking about this kind of thing. The C A O can't do something like require that we go out and fund a bunch of um retrofit projects. Uh, but it can mean that when people are building new things, they have requirements to not make those same mistakes. And that's just like a scope of the C A O, to clarify, like.
Yes, I'm most curious is if we are in working through a backlog and we're going through and prioritizing even those projects. Then. As we know, we're about to complete more of them in the near future, what do we do with C A O that helps with that process? Not with the removal of the barriers, but with whatever else is needed to assist the. Recovery of the species.
Yeah, that would be um things like incorporating the best available science that protects those aquatic and riparian areas. So if that new stream that is wider and happier and healthier because a culvert got removed, needs to then. Be protected from any future development near it that could disrupt it in another way, like you're saying about ecological traps, avoiding creating. More problems in those habitats as they get opened up through restoration projects. And the C A O would just do that naturally by designating streams as areas to be protected, designating riparian areas. And enforcing those protections, yeah.
One of the focuses that we have that we know is an issue with the current C A O is that we want to work on making. Restoration enhancement projects, things like that, uh easier to implement, more frictionless, right?
So looking at your sticker as you say this.
Yeah, right, yeah, so we're that's definitely on our radar and uh we've got some good ideas from things that we've talked about with our with our planning arm. Current planning arm or partners who say this is what's wrong with your current code and this is why I can't do this work easily, please help us.
Yeah, that's a a really big. Yeah.
Yeah, it it it's kind of ironic that you do have to do some of the same. You have to meet some same level of scrutiny for a project that is restoring something. As you do for something that has the.
And we want to make sure the restoration is.
Frictionless, I think that.
Well, frictionless and permitting, but then still has the checks and balances to make sure that it's happening in a way that is genuinely ecologically beneficial. Um, just I've been, we've pretty thoroughly covered um the aquatic and riparian. But there are also dry land habitats in Thurston County that are part of priority habitats and species and part of these critical areas. Uh, examples include Oregon White Oak areas, Old Grove Forest, West Side Prairies especially. Um, connectivity is a really important habitat value as evidenced by both fish passage and. Dry land connectivity for various species um that need to travel as part of their lives. Um, and very excitingly, uh, the Washington Habitat Connectivity Action Plan Connectivity Values Map has recently been published as of this year. And so that is a big statewide map that indicates the highest priority areas for preserving connectivity. Um, a lot of that can be used for larger scale projects like um overpasses for wildlife. I know there's that one on, I think, I ninety, I got to drive under over this summer and that was pretty exciting. Um, but there are approaches we can take to do thing. I know we had talked about connectivity a little bit already and it seems like a pretty important issue. So we have that resource, which is exciting.
Do you want to note that Commissioner Bartlett has his hand up, so Mr. Bartlett, if you'd like to, amen?
Uh, entirely selfishly, um, I was wondering if uh if uh you would be able to share that uh that connectivity map. Mapping information, the new the new stuff that just came out.
Um, do you mean share on the screen right now or send out a link, just to clarify?
Send out a link.
Yeah, we can do that, easy.
Thank you.
Mr. Passenger?
I I love that about the connectivity, uh, but going back for a moment to the fish uh recovery and riparian zones and all of that. Is there anything within the C E C A O or uh? The thought comes to mind that fish are most often a huge thing they need, especially if they're getting back to a. A stream that was not previously accessible is uh shade. And is there anything the C A O we could do to like encourage planting of trees along streams?
Yeah, um, a lot of.
Just not cutting them down, but let's put some back.
Yeah, a lot of the the newest science and guidance about the stream side kind of areas, those riparian areas, one of the s-. Most important ecological functions of those areas is shade and wood debris. Um, so when there are trees in those areas, they keep stream temperatures down. Um, and when they drop branches and things, those that wood debris creates really valuable fish habitat. Um, so protecting and enhancing the vegetation in those areas would be a really important part, um.
Yeah, it's tricky, really tricky. There's a there's basically a threshold that we're like this mostly governs like what. Uh, people can do with their property and when, you know, somebody's trying to get a permit, what kind of conditions you'd put on it, what kind of things you'd allow or where you'd allow people to build. And the there's a there's a constitutional constraint on us that says basically that. Any any kind of exaction that we take from somebody who comes to the permit counter, it has to be, it has to have a nexus. So, you know, replanting something might have a nexus, but it also has to be roughly proportional. Um, so that's that's a really tricky place and it's essentially a regulatory taking. If you're not careful in how you like, if you ask somebody to, as the state Supreme Court said, uh, unplug what has been plucked. Um, it can be, there's a there's a really fine line there when you're looking at it on a permit by permit basis. And thinking about that as a a burden on a permit applicant, there are some things you could do with mitigation. Um, that might allow you to like essentially move where trees were are. So if you want to cut some, if you want to cut something over here or make an impact over here, you're gonna have to mitigate in a place where it might be. More ecologically beneficial, you might get some lift from something like that, you know.
County said, hey, we want to encourage the planting of trees along streams and say. If a private landowner wants to do it, then the county can provide some supplemental funding.
That's exactly what we can do, so we could take a responsibility as a community to say, we want, we want an. End goal that is above that baseline, like there's a no net loss standard that we're supposed to be hitting. It's not clear and nobody's really done a great job trying to figure out whether or not no net loss is even really what we're achieving. At a scale of like a county, but we could as a community decide that regardless of what people are doing on their properties individually. We are going to invest in restoration work and figure out kind of where to put it. Um, there are a couple other places where you might be able to turn some dials with moving mitigation. But it's really, really hard on that permit by permit basis.
Exactly what I want to encourage and it also comes to my mind, sorry, I'll be finished in a second. But the one mineral resource we have here is what gravel and gravel is heavily needed for streams, right? So uh is there any way we could possibly utilize that resource which we have in excess of and utilize it to help in certain areas?
It's really hard to get gravel to stay where you put it in streams, um, that's the big challenge. What you really want to do with a stream is make sure you maintain watershed function. You can do that with two things. Overall canopy cover in a watershed and your riparian areas will decide basically whether or not. Your streams are functional and healthy.
I'll say you want slow and meandering and not fast and straight.
But back to the previous point we just mentioned, we could, what we can do in the ordinance is try to make that work easier for the entities that are doing it on the landscape.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Commissioner Casino?
In in our um. When we're thinking about restoration recovery or in um mitigation sequencing or anything, do do we, will we have to always do it in kind? Or will we be able to, you know, this new wildlife connectivity thing is is fairly new. It certainly wasn't around during the last C A O. Can we incorporate? Um, wildlife connectivity as a mitigation or other impacts or takings? So um, uh, you know, some, you like in our discussions for S N P in our mitigation sequencing. You might have to put in a rain garden or something like that. Could somebody in a situation like this, could somebody use connectivity? And their mitigation plan to offset impacts?
Be cool.
The issue that I see, uh, and that is an interesting concept, so. That probably a solid answer would take a little more research, but the the issue that comes to mind with that is that. I I think that the mitigation that happens for a given impact should be.
Has to be in kind?
Function and value.
It did do the functions and values, um.
Equivalent turns into a weird thing because equivalent's not necessarily identical.
The but I think you it would be, I think it would be hard to, I think, trade amongst functions and values unless they were related. So I don't know if you could trade a essentially like a riparian buffer for. Migration corridor that would unlike things would transfer.
Separate separate functionalities there.
Marketplaces learn to trade apples for oranges, we could do.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a standard we want to use.
So I don't I don't know if they have to be in kind, but I mean, it sounds like maybe you guys are thinking that they do have to be in kind. Rest- restoration and recovery mitigations.
We're supposed to be achieving no net loss of ecosystem functions and values. And so, I mean, if you just take it to the reductio ad absurdum of that, we could give away all of our wetlands for corridors.
Goodbye to a few pocket gophers, hello to a parrot and passage.
Just to.
You gotta wipe out the pocket gophers to put in your overpass.
Just just want to reorient folks, we have fifteen minutes left on the agenda for this topic, so I just want to make sure we get through it.
Yeah, and just to to boil down a couple pieces from that conversation, uh, because we are almost done with the presentation here. Um, the C A O is exclusively going to function at the permit level, at the individual parcel level. Um, and it doesn't dictate any programmatic approaches. So anything like large scale replantings, um, you know, large scale tree canopy. Management or watershed planning, those are all programmatic things that we we're working on and that our department does. The C A O has to have a direct nexus to development and has to relate directly to the development happening on a given property. Um, and so it's really important that it meets those constitutional limitations.
Does that mean that the mitigation has to stay on that property or under that permit to?
That is not necessarily.
Okay, so.
You can do offsite mitigation.
Doesn't kick in unless someone's trying to do something to the land, otherwise it doesn't really do much, so we have other programs that would try to accomplish those goals.
Yeah, I've only seen one example of offsite mitigation in my own personal experience, so but it it can be done, yeah.
So Commissioner Bartlett has his hand up before he speaks, if we can try and avoid too much interjecting. I understand that this is a good topic for folks, but Tasha does have to make notes from this and public listening to it should hear who is speaking. So if we can avoid talking over each other, interjecting too much, that's probably in best practice, so go ahead, Colin.
Are they real? Um, yeah, I guess I was a little concerned about, uh, I guess this, the. I I'm I'm curious about wh- how we how it's managed when you're like, if you're talking about taking out like a an adult tree and you're talking about like replanting elsewhere. You know, if you're talking about uh that kind of the mitigation that you you discussed, like, how does that? How do you take in the reality of like kind of not being able to reliably restore the full con- the the full. Function of what you've just taken out, like, is I I assume it's not like a one for one, because that wouldn't that wouldn't actually do it.
I think that is one of the primary roles of the best available science, especially when it comes to mitigation specifically. Part of a lot of what the best available science does is establish function and values for critical areas. And then establishes what the impacts of development to those functions and values are. Uh, and it gives us a framework for essentially calculating um how to achieve no net loss of those functions and values. That that's at least the intent of the kind of regulatory framework here with the best available science.
Thanks, does that address your concern, uh, Commissioner Bartlett? I get a thumbs up.
Our last slide here is just to keep everyone apprised of where we are in our schedule. Um, so we are the first not grayed out thing on the slide here, we're at the overview. Um, we'll be talking about, December will be spent on geologic hazard areas, including presentation from D N R. And that's what we have up next, that's it.
Any additional questions from the board? Hearing none, uh, we will move on to staff update with.
All right, so um I've got kind of two main updates. Uh, we talked a little bit about the docket process at our last meeting. We have on our upcoming agenda, we're going to be getting a presentation on docket process. We're also reworking internally, um, how we how we kind of feed and initiate the docket. And uh what we're going to be doing is building in a uh a. Deliberate role for the planning commission. So uh what we're going to be doing is we're going to be working on kind of consolidating the the internal needs. Um, looking at the uh anything applicant initiated that's coming in and then um we're gonna. We haven't figured out exactly what it would look like and I think we could take some input. But um we will be soliciting feedback from the planning commission and including that in the um staff reports. That we build that go to the Board of County Commissioners. And then um I think my other staff update is uh, we're gonna get to the bottom of everyone's appointments.
There was a little scuttlebutt before the official record, but it seems like our website listing has inaccurate terms on it. And there's a lack of clarity about how long people's terms are and when their terms end.
We will be working to resolve that. Those are updates, do we have any other updates?
Hey, with no other staff updates, we'll move on to calendar with agenda items. Uh, December third is our next meeting, we have a work session one. On the overview of the upcoming docketing process and proposal, I believe that's what uh Eric was just telling us about. Um, and work section, work session six on the C A O specifically dealing with geological hazard areas. Guidance, B A S, and a discussion. Um, how are folks feeling about the third? Are we able to attend? Anyone present who's not able to attend on the third?
I'll I'll be virtual on the third.
Okay, we should still have Quorum if everyone who's here is able to attend, so. No concerns there, and then the following meeting is December seventeenth. It's a work session seven on the C A O specifically, uh, D N R is uh invited to present on the new landslide hazard mapping. Uh, anyone have a conflict where they would be unable to attend on the seventeenth? No concerns there, so we should be good to keep both of those on the agenda and on the calendar. So we'll move on to agenda item seven, good of the order. Anyone have anything for the good of the order? I see Commissioner Passenger.
Uh, I was at the Olympia City Council last night and noticed on their agenda that they were approving the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. In conjunction with Thurston County and other jurisdictions. Is that something we've been waiting on for quite a while? Is that a big deal that now they're signed on to it? What does it mean to Thurston County now that they've signed on to it?
Um, I don't think it makes a big difference in the way the county would interact with that. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners, from what I understand, accepted that plan, did not adopt that plan. Uh, but through our um comprehensive plan process, we walked through the entire thing. And made decisions on what would get incorporated and so far that has stayed intact through all of our interaction with the board.
So when Olympia is saying they're signing on to something in conjunction with Thurston County, that's not actually accurate?
I'm not sure how they structured.
We'd likely have to see their proposal language.
They can't, the the Olympia City Council can't commit.
They can't, yeah, they can't commit the county.
I I know, that's why, but they're saying we were already committed, we're already signed off on, so I'm saying maybe they're wrong. Maybe they're misunderstanding.
I do not know how they characterized it.
Yeah, I don't I don't think any of us have it in front of us to be able to speak to it in detail.
Listed on the agenda for last night's meeting. Uh, second question uh has to do with a concern that. Brought to my attention by somebody in Tumwater about a planned land use in Tumwater in the U G A. That involves a clear cut of old growth, is anyone aware of any of that?
I heard murmurings about this, let me see if I.
This was shared with Commissioner Mensah um recently and he recommend or his assistant recommended. That they bring it up to the planning commission, that the the Board of Commissioners was, because they might end up doing a hearing on this in the future. They say they want to stay ex parte.
It's an act of land.
Avoid communication on it right now, so they recommended bringing it to the planning commission today.
Who's they?
Alyssa is her name, I don't know much more about than that.
Trying to find more details.
The the board was saying that they should bring a land use issue through the planning commission?
A question about. Issue, go ahead, Commissioner Bartlett.
Oh, uh, yeah, I don't know that uh. Oh, uh, yeah, I don't know that, uh, that name, that, that name's relevant to it. It was just, uh, uh, I, 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 I think I got the same message. And, uh, yeah, it looks like it's, uh. Uh, what, the, the person that I got it from was like the concerned citizen who was raising it. They didn't identify themselves in this, it was just handed to, to me from a person named Alyssa. So that's, that's where that, that name came into it. But, uh, or at least that's what I'm seeing on my end, I don't know if that's true for you too, K P. But, uh, okay, um, yeah, that, uh, there's an active land app, uh, application in the Tumwater U G A. That, uh, it's like, uh, they can't apply the new, new forest land conversion ordinance. Because it's for a whole development and the new code only applies to M A and P A sized development. That's, I'm, I'm sort of actively trying to get more information about this now, um, but that's what I've heard.
I wanted to bring it to attention.
We, if we knew like the, the name or the plot, we could probably look up the active land application, couldn't we?
We could, but it's not a planning commission issue.
It's a question of purview. So the, on a specific application, that wouldn't be in the, in the planning commission's purview. We did, we did pass tree preservation ordinances recently that came through the planning commission. This also could be, if it's a, like a, a broader issue, something that we look at through. Like if the, like subdivision code gets on the docket.
Yeah, I think that there are some limitations about where the, uh, forest lands conversion ordinance currently applies. Because there are projects like subdivisions that have their own chapters of code that govern how they get developed. And it's my understanding that in order to apply, um, and make mesh the two. The, the forest lands conversion and the subdivisions chapter, there would need to be a code update. Which is, is it's currently exempted from forest lands conversion.
And it gets tricky when you're talking about U G As versus unincorporated county. So there's, the forest land conversion applies outside U G As. Um, and deliberately, uh, because U G As are intended for development.
It sounds like.
Yeah, I guess that was.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, that, that, that was part of my, my, my interest in it. From a planning commission perspective is just like the way that it seems to be interrelating with, uh. With, with the, the intent of U G As versus the reality of them still having a lot of habitat on them. Seems relevant to the kinds of conversations we're having. But yeah, I hear you about that, this isn't, like, this specific development isn't specifically something that we can address. But yeah, I, I, yeah.
I would encourage, uh, you to collect more information if it's a matter you'd like the planning commission to look at further. All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, with nothing else, we will adjourn early at seven forty four P M.
I slept down.
I always enjoy an early.